The following meeting of the Delaware County Board of Supervisors held November 21st is a production of The Reporter, Delaware County's leading news source.
I'd like to call to order for local laws number 22 through 36 for salary increases. There's a sign-in sheet that's being passed around. I ask that you sign your name in the town you are from. And please stand, come forward a little and state your name, the town you live, and make your comment, please. Elizabeth, you can pass it to the people. If there are no comments on the local laws number 22 through 36, I will declare this public hearing over. Now call to order, public hearing number two is for comments regarding the 2024 tentative budget. Again, there's a sheet going around, kindly signed it, and the town that you reside in, come forward and please make your comment. We'll go into our regular scheduled board meeting. Kenny, please call the roll. Flatstone? Malley? Here. Merrill? Valente? Here. Tuckhill? Here. Exto? Here. Taggart? Here. Marshfield? Here. Verno? Here. Tosco? Here. Haynes? Here. Scott? Here. Ellis? Davis? Here. Hinckley? Here. Wilson? Here. Kozier? Here. Layton? Here. Sutter? Here. Okay, approval of the minute from our last board meeting. Were there any additions or corrections to those meeting minutes? Not, they will stand as submitted. Communications? All communications received, except that referred to their respective committees. There is no privilege of the floor this afternoon. Are there any standing committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. First resolution is number 207.
I'll move this, ask for its adoption.
Second.
2023 Budget Amendment Acceptance for Cost of Living Adjustment, Department of Mental Conference. Questions on this? Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes. Resolution number 208. 2023 Budget Amendment Designation of Delaware County as Local Sponsor for Snow and Deal Grant. Questions on this? This isn't annual grant. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes. Resolution number 210. 2023 Budget Amendment Transfer of Funds Innovative Readiness Training, IRT, Planning Department. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes. Resolution number 211. I bring this up for its adoption. Second. Authorizing the implementation and funding of 100% of the cost of a transportation project, which may be eligible for federal aid and/or state aid or reimbursement from Bridge New York Funds, Department of Public Works. Questions on this resolution? Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes. Resolution number 212. I bring this up for its adoption. Second. Authorization for disposition of personal property no longer necessary for public use, Department of Buildings and Brands. This is also a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 213. I bring this resolution up for its approval. Second. Authorization for disposition of personal property no longer necessary for public use, Department of Buildings and Brands. This is also a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 214. I bring this resolution up for its approval. Second. Authorization for disposition of personal property no longer necessary for public use, Department of Buildings and Brands. This is also a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 214. I bring this resolution up for its approval. Direct town tax. These are the chargebacks. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes. Resolution number 215. I bring this resolution up for its approval. Second. Levy of Town Accounts. Questions?
Bill, so you're negative, does that mean you've got some stumpage in there?
Got some what?
You're a negative, does that mean you've got some stumpage tax or something in there to make that negative?
Ah, it's from the fire company. They must, I really don't know, they made a mistake and we had to redo it.
Oh, oh, oh. Oh yeah?
I thought you probably had some.
Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes. Resolution number 216. I bring this resolution up for its approval. Second. Year-end accounting modifications to the 2023 Budget, Department of Fiscal Affairs. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes. Resolution number 217. I'm sorry, after the board meeting, there are the mortgage checks, checks for everyone. Sorry, of course, I have mortgages. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes. No, then Ellis needs to bring up each local law. No, these are not prefiled. This is.
All right, I'll bring up local law number four, here we ask for approval.
I'd like to say something about all these before we start voting. Because I, I for one did not clearly understand, I read papers and I say, oh Jesus, and I'm telling you right now, I've been inundated with calls and emails. And I did a lot of communicating with our personnel director so that I could understand it better. But when I came out and tallied up these wage increases, I came up with the highest one at 9% for the real property director, seven and a half for the social services commissioner, 7% for the sheriff, and 6% for personnel director. The rest of them are all between 4.25 and 4.5, give or take. So I said, how come the difference? I had an idea, but I let her tell me. Our mono DSS commissioner and the personnel director, there was steps in there, plus the raise. Steps. And I said, good, that's what I had an idea of some of this was. The sheriff had, he had, he's had, this would be his third raise this year. He adopted resolution in April, which was for 2023, these are for 2024. And then, in order to keep him, so he was being paid more than some of his staff, we had an adjustment in there. So that explained him, okay? The other one was the real property director, and she was, she requested a raise, the only one out of the batch, as I understand that, that wasn't in the budget. She requested a raise, and that's why she's at 9%. She was given, she wanted more of a raise, but she was given a negotiated middle settlement for it. So that's all I want to say. I didn't understand it at all. I may have, you all understood it, but I do understand it now, and I'm ready to vote. And the important thing to realize too is, we don't have, the county doesn't have retirement health insurance. That's a big deal. Isiegel County has it, and they pay the premiums to have it. We don't have that. So that's a, you know, we're, Jesus, oh well, I know, we're in an age of trying to retain our, our personnel, and when we do lose a personnel, we look to replace them. And we need to fringe benefits and pay, be competitive, or we're going to lag behind the eight ball. I'm saying that adjoining counties pay health insurance for retirees. We don't, that is a big deal, financially, to any county. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ellis?
I'd like to bring local law number 22 to the board and ask for its approval.
Need a second? Thank you, Gary. Salary Increase Director, Community Mental Health Services. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes.
I'd like to bring local law number 23 to the table and ask for its approval.
Salary Increase Election Commissioner. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes.
I'd like to bring local law number 27 to the board and ask for its approval.
Salary Increase Personnel Officer. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes.
I'd like to bring local law number 28 to the table and ask for its approval.
Salary Increase Public Defender. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes.
I'd like to bring local law number 27 to the board and ask for its approval.
Salary Increase Personnel Officer. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes.
I'd like to bring local law number 28 to the table and ask for its approval.
Salary Increase Public Defender. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes.
I'd like to bring local law number 29 to the table and ask for its approval.
Salary Increase Public Health Director. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes.
I'd like to bring local law number 31 to the table and ask for its approval.
Salary Increase Director of Real Property Tax Services. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? No.
I'd like to bring local law number 32 to the table and ask for its approval.
Salary Increase Commissioner of Social Services. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes.
I'd like to bring local law number 33 to the table and ask for its approval.
Salary Increase Director of Veteran Service Agency. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes.
I'd like to bring local law number 34 to the table and ask for its approval.
Salary Increase County Clerk. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes.
Finally, I would like to bring local law number 36 to the table and ask for its approval.
Salary Increase County Treasurer. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes. Okay, I have four not prefiled resolutions. I'll waive rule 10 without objection. Resolution number 218.
I'll bring this resolution up and ask for its approval.
Second. Payment of Audit. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes. Resolution number 219.
I'd like to bring resolution 219 to the floor and ask for its approval.
Apportement of County Self-Insurance Budget. Please call the roll. Malley? Yes. Valente? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Exto? Yes. Taggart? Yes. Marshfield? Yes. Verno? Yes. Tosco? Yes. Haynes? Yes. Scott? Yes. Ellis? Yes. Davis? Yes. Hinckley? Yes. Wilson? Yes. Kozier? Yes. Layton? Yes. Sutter? Yes. Resolution number 220.
Adoption of the 2024 budget. It's a not, not.
What is this, the adoption of the budget?
Adoption of the budget. Please call the roll.
I'd like to comment on the.
Okay. Just a second.
When the finance committee started on this budget, we were at 23%. And we worked on it, worked on it. My wife, I'd come home, she'd say, what are you down to now? I said, 19%. And we just keep hammering, hammering. We defunded a lot of positions. And our appropriations for this year was 10,763,000, almost 64,000, which was up considerably from 23%. But then so was in our revenues. Revenues, 4,419,000. And we've taken more of our reserves this year. We've taken 5,692,61. Extremely important to note that we had 500,000 in that from our sales tax, so that everybody in the county could benefit. And that's in that 5,692,000. So we took a half a million dollars more in sales tax and put it in the reserves. When we ended up, we had 652,656 difference between the revenues and expenditures. That's not including any increase or maybe decrease, but I think increase in assessments. So the effect to the taxpayers will be 652,000 plus any increased assessments for the year. So I just want to say that I, do I agree with everything in the budget? No, I don't. But am I going to let up, let something small hold up the entire budget? I think it's a good budget. What are we under?
It's 1.9%.
1.9%, we're just under 2%. In order for the state to keep funding our Raise the Age program, we need it to be under 2%.